Thank you, sir. So, welcome everyone to County Council, August 13th, 2020. I will ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Thank you Deputy Warden Hicks. I have all members in attendance except for Councillors Gamble and Body. We have Councillor Thomas joining us on behalf of Councillor Body.
Thank you. So, does anyone have any declaration of pecuniary interest? I see no raised hands, Madam Clerk. Okay, then we'll move on. If one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Next is item number four, adoption of minutes. And those are the minutes of County Council and Committee of the whole dated July 23rd, 2020. That is moved by Councillor Potter and seconded by Councillor Keveney. Do we have any discussion of those sets of minutes? I don't see any hands. Then I'll call the question. All those in favor, oh, sorry, we should be saying any opposed, right? Any opposed? I'm going to say that that is carried. Thank you very much. We have no requirement for a closed meeting. And item number six is reports. First of all, Board of Health Minutes dated June 26th, 2020. That will be moved by Councillor Patterson and seconded by Councillor O'Leary. Is Dr. Era present, Madam Clerk?
No, I don't think he is. I'm wondering if Councillor Patterson could provide an overview.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Yes, this is an update from Dr. Era. The health unit continues to have full control over the outbreak in Graham Bruce Counties. As of yesterday, August 12th, there were five active cases. Zero cases currently hospitalized, zero deaths, and zero facilities in outbreak. The health unit has been working with all schools in Graham Bruce to ensure safe reopening. And Dr. Era is meeting every two weeks with the executive from all schools. There's been increased reports of international visitors feeling to self-quarantine. So, the health unit is working with local police services and the enforcement section of the Public Health Agency of Canada with regards to management and follow-up to ensure compliance. Workplace testing is underway and this data will be collated and analyzed as a feasibility study to optimize the process to break the chain of transmission. And as far as I know, so far, it's only been Bruce Power and Chapman's. So, they will get some good data from that. They're receiving quite a few reopening plans and they are reviewing them to help businesses and organizations to open up. The health unit's infectious disease team continues with case and contact management, reporting and responding to COVID-related calls. Contact tracing exceeds provincial targets with 100% of all cases contacted within 24 hours. So, that's really good news. And on top of all of that, the health unit team continues to ensure essential public health activities not related to COVID-19, ensuring that they're delivered safely and effectively. And I do happen to have a bookmark that lists all the essential services of public health, which was pretty funny. I was reading a book and there it was, but I'm not going to read all those services. People are aware of what public health does, so. And if there's any questions, I can try and answer them or get back to you with the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Are there any questions at all on this report? I do not see any. So, then I will call the question. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, I will say that that also is carried. We'll move to item number seven, which is adoption of a bylaw, 5090, a bylaw to update the fees and service charges for the county of Gray. That is moved by Councillor Woodbury and seconded by Councillor Carlton. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, then again, I'll call the question. Is there anyone opposed? Again, seeing none, I will say that that's carried. Thank you very much. We'll turn next to item number eight, good news and celebration. So, we will start, why don't we start with Chatsworth?
Thank you Deputy Warden Hicks and good morning County Council. Not a lot to report. I'd like to certainly extend our appreciation to the provincial and federal governments for the announcement yesterday in regards to the emergency COVID funding for all of our municipalities. It's certainly going to be helpful. We are planning to go back to in-person council meetings in September with virtual participation from the public. So, kind of councils are looking forward to that. And I think I'll end there. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Mackie. Councillor Gamble, oh, he's not present, right? Madam Clerk?
Correct, sorry. I was on mute.
No problem. Next, then we'll turn to Georgian Bluffs. Councillor Burley?
Thank you Deputy Warden. We're still living the dream in Georgian Bluffs. We had our first council meeting in chambers last night, which was great to have it happen again. Different world when you get back into your council chambers with councils versus video. Well received. Tried something different and with no hits, just thanks to our staff. I must say my favorite topic, the International Airport. Our flights are up, have surpassed last year's at the same time, even during the COVID, which is quite amazing when you stop and think about it. The other thing too, just amazing, which just shows you how great our staff are working, is that our fuel sales are the cheapest in Ontario. And that's quite amazing when you stop and think about it. All other airports are not as fortunate as what Warden, Kipling International Airport is, but we're really looking for business. Thank you.
Water's cheap.
Thank you, Councillor Burley. It's always nice to hear that flights are up. Sorry, that's about as funny as I'll get this morning. Councillor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden, and good morning to everyone in council. The good news I have is that just in time for us to go back into actual meetings in council chambers, I finally get high-speed internet with fiber optic that Bell has just put in in the section of township I live in. So, it's nice having that. So, that's my good news today.
Very good. Thank you, Councillor Carlton. I'll turn next to Gray Highland. Is our Warden still with us?
Yes, I am. Just a quick update, I will mirror the comments from the Mayor of Chatsworth. It's great to see that we are receiving those funds throughout the municipalities of Gray County and as the Gray County itself for COVID-related expenses. Certainly, we are all moving forward to AMO's conference next week for those that are attending. That's, it looks like it's going to be a full agenda. And with, I think we've been quite successful in our request for having delegations. From a Gray Highlands perspective, we are in the process, our offices, we're going to have 50% of our staff coming back around the 17th of August. Some staff are back now. We're in the process of having our front counter reconstructed to include Plexiglas so we can eventually open up to the general public. Currently at this time, with where we are located in the base part of Gray Gables, we are using one of the windows that's sort of under a canopy that we're addressing public through that way, which is working out fairly well, where people can come up to the window and then we can have that interaction with the staff that are there. And so, slowly moving back into that process. Interesting enough, I've had a contact from a hockey parent who's also the president of the Osprey Minor Hockey with questions about how we're going back to hockey and arenas. And I'm sure other municipalities are also going to be talking about that as well. So, I'm sure our staff are talking to other staff on that. But, you know, there are guidelines that he has forwarded to me with regards to OMHA's rules and regulations. So, if you haven't had a chance to see those, that's probably a good start in the sense of what OMHA is sort of laying out for their use of those players and staff. And it's interesting, they're talking about each arena having a bubble of 50 and those kids stay in that arena. They don't move around to other arenas. So, there, you know, so there's going to be some big changes there. And so, at this point, that's about all I have to update, other than lots of traffic around. And certainly, summer has been a great summer and a few weeks left to enjoy. So, thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Warden. Councillor Desai, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Just a couple of things to add. First one being that we have the Fever Shandtensmen, they're trying to work on a drive-in movie night at the Fever Shandt Park. And it's really heartening to see, to see a group sort of try and continue to fundraise towards their mandate despite the restrictions of COVID. I'm hoping they can get the event put together and I wish them all the success for that. Second, I also have it on good authority from our Gray Highlands Clerk, who is without question the only redeeming part of the township of Southgate, that Gray Highlands could return to in-person council meetings as early as October. And I'm really looking forward to that. It's been a whole summer of not wearing a suit and tie. And quite frankly, t-shirt and shorts puts me out of my element. So, I'm looking forward to that. And of course, I'm also looking forward to hopefully being back in county council chambers soon and seeing all of you again after quite a while. And that'll be it for me. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Councillor Desai. You're looking very sharp in your suit and tie, at least on the picture that I see. Nice shot. Turning next to the town of Hanover, Councillor Patterson?
Thank you Deputy Warden and good morning County Council. In Hanover, we're still living the dream, but I'm borrowing a new tagline. It's always sunny in H-Town. I read that in. The virtual fall fair hosted by the Hanover-Bentick-Brant Agricultural Society was a success and well-received. I'm always amazed at how creative people are. And just a little note, if you're in Hanover and take a drive by P&amp;H Milling, they're constructing six new silos for their operation. Four are up and two to go, and it's pretty amazing to see those big silos go up. We have one gas station that's being reconstructed and it was leveled in two days. Again, those big machines come in and it's down. Another gas station has opened up at the south end of Hanover, so those residents will be very happy and anyone coming through Hanover at the south end will be pleased. We've got quite a few projects happening in Hanover, including a new subdivision, sidewalk, a new sidewalk near the senior high school, and reconstruction of a couple of streets. So, that's what's happening in Hanover. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. We'll move next to Meaford and Councillor Compass.
Thank you very much Deputy Warden and good morning, everyone. Just a quick update from us, things are very busy here in Meaford. Traffic is heavy, as I'm sure it is everywhere. People are on the move this summer. Memorial Park Campsite is full. I hope you've enjoyed your little stay with us, Deputy Warden. And the shoreline parks are under reconstruction, so that's a very welcome sight to see playground equipment and stuff being put back into its usable form again. Beaches are open. People are being very responsible on the beaches, which I'm happy to see, but it's wonderful to see the kids being kids out playing as they should be without a care in the world in the water over the summer. I'm interested in everyone's perspective about moving out of the emergency status and look forward to the discussion with county's emergency control group on that next week. It's certainly come to our attention and we're looking at it. I must admit to being a little concerned about being cautious until we have some sense of how the return to school is going to be managed and what effect that will have on our vulnerable populations. And I'm not sure that I'm ready to leap into progressing as much as we all are looking forward to seeing each other alive and well around the council table and with our public being much more engaged. But I think, I think this could be a challenge for us until we have some better sense of how our school back into entry is going to be managed. So, look forward to that discussion next week. And I think, that said, I know the businesses are attracting folks downtown and that's a good thing. Our patios are busy. So, we're enjoying summer. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Councillor Compass, and it was nice to have that cameo appearance as well.
My husband, everyone.
Next, we'll turn to Councillor Keveney.
Thank you Deputy Warden Hicks and good morning County Council and just a couple of things to add. And perhaps some of you saw a recent article on Facebook from myameca.com. And in that entitled, "The 17 Best Small Towns to Visit on Ontario," Meaford was named, and we're very proud of that. Meaford was dubbed "The Little Sister of Collingwood," but with better genetics. I really like that line. Our beautiful harbor, beautiful Joe Parker mentioned, along with Grandma Lambs and the Irish Mountain Lookout. So, that was a special highlight this week. Our farmer's market has returned to an in-person market. This past Friday, they had six vendors, and I know that they got great reviews from the health unit in how they managed the market. And this week, there will be more vendors, and those vendors that are there, it's all food this year. So, the, and besides that, we have farm gate markets everywhere, whether you drive down the 7th Line, the 9th Line, 15, 16 are sort of our main country roads. There are just little farm markets at many gates and they're selling their corn and their fresh produce and it's great and people are really enjoying those. And you can almost get a meal by touring around to those markets. So, that is pretty much it for what's going on in Meaford. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Keveney. We're going to turn to the city of Owen Sound and Mayor Body's not here, so we'll, Councillor Thomas.
Councillor Thomas, you're on mute still?
Well, it was working that way earlier. Sorry about that. Thanks Deputy Warden. Lots going on in the city of Owen Sound. I guess the nearest and dearest development to my heart is we finally got the Owen Sound and North Gray Union Public Library open to the public this Tuesday, and things are going very well. People don't need to use curbside pickup for their books any longer. And I know there's a great sense of relief in the regulars at the library who are finally able to get back to their happy place. Many other things going on in the city. As Councillor Keveney mentioned, we're doing very well with our open patios in the downtown. They seem to be just swarmed with people day in and day out, which I know is making a lot of our local restaurants very happy to see people returning that way. And I just attribute it to people being tired of their own cooking for so many months. But whatever it is, it's working out very well. Our planning department is very busy. The developers are coming out in droves and trying to get back to what they were doing before. And Owen Sound also is trying to organize a couple of drive-in movie nights at the Bayshore Community Centre. And we've returned in August to our Sunday Night Summer Concert Series, though it's been moved to Kelso Beach Park to accommodate more people. However, they'll just all have to wear wet suits to attend.
Thank you, Councillor Thomas. Councillor O'Leary, anything to add?
Oh, I can't figure out why Richard missed out on the huge load of salt that was dropped off at the harbor down next to the elevator. So, for those of you who are looking forward to the winter season, it's on its way. That's all I have.
Very good.
Mr. Deputy Warden, I'll just let you know that Councillor Burley and Warden McQueen have left the meeting for the minister's visit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we're turning next to Southgate and Councillor Woodbury.
Thank you. Everything's going good in the sunny south here. We're, have an Agra Expo that's online, not this weekend, near Holstein, and they put a lot of work and organization into that. The Dundalk Agricultural Society is going to do a drive-through fall fair, which should be interesting. And other than that, we're moving slowly into getting staff back in and getting things going there. It's a different world trying to figure out how to do things, and we're just enjoying the summer.
Thank you, Councillor Woodbury. Councillor Mill?
Thank you Buck. And it's the same as Meaford. Our farmer's market is now open for in-person shopping. So, they're quite happy, but they've had a good season so far with the curbside pickup, but they're happy to be serving customers in person again now. I want to give a shout-out to Pat Hoy and his staff. Gray Road 9 down here is awesome. They put the top lift on the asphalt, I think that was the end of last week or maybe the first of this week. I was actually out on it yesterday and I was coming along and there was a young lad ahead of me on a dirt bike and he was catwalking down the road. He was pretty confident the asphalt was nice and smooth, and it was. So, we just need the lines and the shoulders and we'd be all set. And as far as the Gray Highlands Clerk, you're welcome, Councillor Desai.
Thank you, Councillor Mill. We'll turn next to the town of Blue Mountains and Councillor Soever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Lot going on in the town of Blue Mountains. Municipal projects are proceeding well. We, the demolishing of the former food land, which was purchased by the town, has a potential site for attainable housing, was completed. It was done about 50% under budget and the, all the material is being recycled. Nothing's going to the dump. The concrete blocks are being ground into eight gravel for municipal use. The steel frame is being sold. Everything's being salvaged, so that is good news and it's a very green project. The long-awaited sidewalks in Clarksburg are being completed and we've finished shoreline restoration at Little River Park. So, lots of municipal projects. Also, the community's been very active. Last week, I attended the launch of our Tree Trust. This is a citizen-led initiative that raises money and selects trees throughout the town to be preserved. There's been a lot of talk about planting new trees for carbon sequestration and CO2 reduction. But, you know, large trees that are already growing are probably much more efficient at that. You'd have to plant a lot of little trees to match one large maple tree. So, the tree that was selected is about 200 years old and it survived the building of the railroad here. It's only 20 feet from the Georgian Trail. Most majestic, but it does need a bit of work in terms of pruning back the edges so that it'll grow up the middle. And we learned a lot about how to preserve older trees. The arborist says it could live for another 200 years if we take care of it. So, the citizens are raising the money and the arborist donated this time and this tree will have a long, hopefully, a long and happy life. We also had our Lobster Fest. We, it raised $22,000 for the Grants and Donations Committee of the town, as well as our community partners, the Beaver Valley Outreach and the Marsh Street Centre. And as well, it was held in the Legion parking lot, so the Legion could run the bar. They've, of course, been closed for a while, so they raised some additional funds and I'm not sure exactly what that number was. But I was there and I want to thank the Warden and also Minister MacLeod, who's up again today, was there, as well as our MPP, Terry Dowdell. So, it was a very successful event and it was organized by the Grants and Donations Committee, but the volunteers were all provided from these groups. Yesterday, we also had the parliamentary assistant to the solicitor general here. We received a grant for $300,000 for a mobile victims unit. This unit is a van that includes a service dog and trained child advocacy personnel so that when there are young victims of crime, you know, assault or sexual assault or something, they now do not have to travel to either Arilla or Barry to get interviewed in a very cold atmosphere. The van will bring the investigators and video equipment and everything to the victim and they can be interviewed in a much more local environment, a friendly environment with a service dog present. And it helps relax the victims and so they're not re-traumatized when they're telling their story. So, this is a great initiative that was pioneered by our local, by the OPP, who we retain for services with the support of our Police Services Board. So, our Police Services Board is acting as the proponent and the keeper of the funds to go back to the OPP for administrative purposes. And this will serve a broad area around the town of Blue Mountains in this part of Gray County and Simple County as well. Other than that, we also received our provincial funding yesterday and we're very happy to receive that. We've great, we've had quite a few expenses in expanding our bylaw services for the summer. And no matter how many officers you have, there never seems to be enough to follow all the tourists around that are arriving in the area. So, it's very much appreciated that the provincial government sent us this funding so that we can manage, I don't know how many there are. Normally, we have 2.5 million visitors this summer, but this summer, it seems like there's at least double the number. So, I'm sure we'll have some idea from the Blue Mountain Resort, keeps pretty good statistics by the end of the summer, but it's truly been a different summer and so these funds are really appreciated.
Thank you, Councillor Soever. The OPP initiative sounds really interesting. And I have to say, the pictures of the Lobster Fest were also quite fabulous. Nice to see that. Councillor Potter, you're next.
Thank you. And yes, the Lobster Fest, I couldn't help out this year, but I did enjoy some of the lobster and that's my good news. But the mayor, the mayor, Councillor Soever did cover a lot of the stuff. It is great to see the sidewalks in Clarksburg, which have been needed for a long time, and we're glad to have that done. And just to add a couple of quick things, the Blue Mountains Public Library will reopen to the public this coming week, on Tuesday. They took a little extra time to refinish the floors. So, it just was a great time to do that and it meant staying closed a week longer, but I think it would be well worth it. And they always have lots of stuff going on if you go to their website. Lots of stuff going on online, including craft shows or craft programs, trivia nights, summer reading club and so on. And I also understand that the Marsh Street Centre is beginning to slowly get some new programs up and running again. So, things are beginning to open up again, but very carefully, as the mayor said, lots of people around. It's great to see people enjoying themselves. We just have a real challenge to make sure that they do it safely. So, that's it for me and thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. And we turn next to the always patient municipality of West Gray and Councillor Robinson.
Well, thank you Deputy Warden and good morning County Council. I was pleased on behalf of West Gray to participate as a delegation at the Provincial Standing Committee on Finance and Economic Affairs. There was a meeting beginning of August. I spoke regarding the impacts of COVID on certain sectors of the economy. So, I was rather pleased to be representing in that fashion. Also, I'm looking forward to next week and our delegations through AMO. Thank you, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Councillor Robinson. And last but not least, Councillor Hutchinson. Thank you, Councilor Robinson, and last but not least, Councilor Hutchinson. I did see him log out at one point.
Good morning, Deputy Warden Hicks, and thank you. I actually, my internet went down and I had to just come back in, but anyways, I'm pleased to say that we actually, the Economic Development Committee in West Gray completed the CIP portion of what we're working on. And it went out for, we had a, held a public meeting this week, so I think we're one step closer and we're getting closer to having our CIP in place. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Hutchinson. I would like to add a congratulations to Councilors Columbus and Keveney because, and to the entire staff of the municipality of Meaford, because I enjoyed four days and three nights at beautiful Memorial Park. And I have to tell you, that place is a real gem. Last year, I had the pleasure of staying in the town of Blue Mountains or, and that was wonderful. But Memorial Park, a real gem, and I have to congratulate your staff. They run a really clean, really ship operation. It is an absolute gem. I enjoyed my time there. I was able to enjoy the bike trail. I was able to enjoy the harbor. My daughter swam for hours and we just had a really, really great time. So if everybody else has a chance to really check out Memorial Park, one of the few places where you can do a hookup and you get, you get sewer hookup, you get the water, and it is just a wonderful place. I believe that Owen Sound also has sewer, if I'm not incorrect, but thank you again, folks. You're doing a great job there and Memorial Park is a real gem.
Thank you very much for that word of praise that I was certainly pass on to our staff, but we can't pay for that kind of advertising, so thank you, Deputy Warden. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. It's well deserved. So now I'm turning to, back to the agenda and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn and that's going to come from Councilor O'Leary and seconded by Councilor Mill. Any discussion? Any opposed? Then we are adjourned and we will turn our attention next.